I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mrs. Chu, Mr. Sizmar, Mrs. Wass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purposes. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, everybody. Sorry, we're talking to your backs just for a moment, but I promise we're just gonna take a couple of minutes and get a little bit of housekeeping. No pressure, the superintendent's report, and then we're going to, I promise you, come up forward and you'll be able to look the way you're supposed to look. So why don't you tell these nice people's backs what's in the superintendent's report this evening?
Good evening, everyone, to the backs of your heads. And we do have video here to the right, if you can twist around that way. But I wouldn't expect you to turn toward me. I'll be the soothing voice in the background.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Last Thursday, Dr. Vannella, principal of the high school, and I attended two great events. The first event, students gathered for a vigil in support of those affected by the tragedy at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. Students had the opportunity to write letters of support to the community there in Texas. And the event was held after school in the high school auditorium, so congratulations to them for their advocacy. The second event was the Waxman Scholars Presentation in the Media Center. The students in our research and seminar science honors course participate in partnership with the Waxman's Institute at Rutgers University and share the amazing work they have done with administrators, parents, teachers, and peers. The students discuss the discoveries they made during their research and how this course has impacted them as students. And we have one of those students right here, serving as the student representative from the high school. On Tuesday morning, I had the pleasure of attending the Hammerhill Middle School Student of the Month celebration. This program honors a student each month from both 6th and 7th grade for their exceptional character and overall positive contribution to Hammerhill in the East Brunswick community. Hammerhill faculty and staff members are asked to nominate students each month whom they see going above and beyond every day with positive behavior expectations. During this commemorative event, students were invited along with their family members and their nominating teachers to recognize outstanding achievements. Over the last week, our 5th graders enjoyed the traditional rocket launches at each school. Students are always amazed to see how high the rockets go and marvel at the different trajectories each rocket follows. And during the rocketry unit, students build the rockets from kits, gaining experience in design, engineering principles, and project management. They also explore concepts related to Newton's laws and gravity throughout the building process. And just one aside, not too many years ago, I did build a rocket and launched it at Bound Monroe. In somebody's backyard, there is still a rocket. In sports, boys' track are the Group Four state champs. Congratulations to them. And boys' tennis are also the Group Four state champs. Congratulations to them as well. Just a few reminders as we wrap up this school year. Tomorrow, Friday, June 17th and Monday, June 20th, are single-session days for Churchill and high school students only as they finish taking their finals. Tuesday, June 21st and Wednesday, June 22nd are single-session days with no lunch served for all students. Wednesday, June 22nd is the last day of school for all students, and graduation for the class of 2022 will be held at the Cure Arena beginning at 11:00 a.m. And the first day of school, believe it or not, for the 2022-2023 school year is Tuesday, September 6th. And I wish everyone a safe and relaxing summer, although short. Thank you.
Always too short this summer. Okay, now, all the good stuff. So you've joined me up front now?
We will.
Okay. Don't worry, we're coming to you, so you don't have to turn anywhere.
Good evening, everyone. Again, this time in the front of the room. And thank you for being here to celebrate our, believe it or not, 2020 Wall of Honor induction. A long time coming for Dr. Evelyn Ogden, a woman who influenced our school district in extraordinary ways. We will share details of her contributions with you later in the program. But first, a little history about the Wall of Honor. The Wall of Honor you see here was constructed with the purpose of honoring individuals who have made a significant and extraordinary contribution to East Brunswick schools. A recognition committee composed of members of the Board of Education, the East Brunswick Education Association, and the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association was established to develop the guidelines and criteria for the selection of the honorees. Eligibility for this honor begins at 1 1/2 years following the June 30th of the retirement year and ends 3 1/2 years later. Very select group. A register of honors located at the right of the Wall of Honor. It's the big book over there, the Book of Secrets, which details the service history of the individuals chosen for this honor. The register allows us to memorialize the wonderful contributions of these individuals. So at this time, I would like to introduce Mrs. Lori Lacks, who is the president of the Board of Education, to say a few remarks.
So when I went to say hi to Dr. Ogden, she said, "You're still on the Board of Education." And I said, "Yes, not only that, I did something I never, I always said I never would do, which is to be board president." But way back when, when I first got on the board, Dr. Ogden was one of the people that I learned the most from. My husband, to this day, calls her probably the brightest person he has ever met. It is so lovely to have you back in this district. I am so excited that we finally get to celebrate all you have done for us on behalf of the Board of Education. Congratulations. And I'm going to let everybody now hear a little bit more about Dr. Ogden and why we are bestowing this honor upon her today. And it's nice to see your faces. You have lovely backs, though.
Now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Dana Zmbicki, who is president of the East Brunswick Education Association.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Dr. Ogden. So what I remember most about you, first of all, was you always were a fierce advocate for the curriculum and ensuring that our East Brunswick students had everything they needed to excel and also ensuring that your staff had all the tools that were necessary to make that all happen. On a personal note, I was counting, I think it was 31 years ago, you did my summary evaluation for my tenure in the district. There was never more of a nervous day in my entire life because having Dr. Ogden do your summary was absolutely nerve-wracking. And I remember planning my lesson and trying to make sure I literally did everything in 40 minutes. It was a crazy lesson because I wanted to do everything in 40 minutes. And when we had our, I guess they still, back then called them summary conferences, but when we had our summary conference, the one thing that I remember that you told me was, "Just believe in yourself and do what you do." And I want to thank you because I'm still doing what I do. And thank you so much for giving me tenure. Congratulations, thank you.
Now I'm questioning. Was there a typo in the document that maybe got hidden somewhere? Now it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Andy Scanlon, who is president of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. A couple things. First of all, it was great to see the Waxman honors there. One of the things that Dr. Ogden brought to East Brunswick, quite a phenomenal program. Also, you know, Dr. Valeski mentioned back-to-school. Another program that Dr. Ogden brought to East Brunswick is our marine biology program. And I remember going on a field trip with the marine biology kids. And this is, you know, May-ish, sometime around early May. And there was a photo shoot going on. I'm like, "Oh, that's kind of interesting." We're down in Sandy Hook. I say, "So what's going on?" And guess what they were shooting? Back-to-school ads. And which was, you know, usually you see them sometime in August or whatever, but that was, that was a very interesting sort of turn of events there. But anyway, I cannot say enough about Dr. Ogden. You know, Dr. Ogden is one of the people who are game changers. She is the one who did put the focus on curriculum, the focus on achievement, on student achievement, on teacher achievement. Dr. Ogden is the reason why, if you walk out these halls and make a left or right, you'll see her face, you'll see her name, you'll see all the images and all the awards that she brought to East Brunswick through her excellence and through making us better. So, Dr. Ogden, this is like, you know, the Hall of Fame. Mariano Rivera, I would imagine that you and he would be tied. Possibly same theme song. The, because it's always interesting. You don't want to get in the box against Dr. Ogden. She is extraordinarily smart and excellent with words, you know, authored many books. But anyway, I'm sure you'll know more about that. But congratulations, Dr. Ogden, and thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you've done for the district, for all the students in the district, and, you know, me personally, you know, letting me be part of the curriculum team 10 years ago. You know, it changed my whole career path. So congratulations and thank you for everything.
So now, I get the distinct pleasure of talking about our inductee, Dr. Evelyn Ogden. Not many people can say they spent 58 years in a profession or in education. And Dr. Hunt Ogden has that unique bragging right. Evelyn attended Douglas College and later received her doctorate in Statistics and Psychological Assessment from Rutgers University. And she quickly rose to the ranks in a neighboring school district, developing the Classroom of Today's World Project. And later, she served as Deputy Assistant Commissioner for Research Curriculum and Evaluation with the New Jersey Department of Education. In May of 1987, Evelyn joined East Brunswick Public Schools as deputy superintendent. During Evelyn's nearly 31-year tenure, she was an outstanding mentor to the supervisors in the curriculum department, as you already heard from Mr. Scanlon, many who are attending this evening. Evelyn was instrumental in the revision of hundreds of board policies and regulations, and this is before we became automated and digitized, having served as the Board Policy Committee liaison for many years. Evelyn also served as the central office administrator designated to the Thorough and Efficient Committee for many years, making critical curriculum decisions with board members, administrators, and staff. She coordinated the revision of over 50 curricula and earned the district high rankings for our programs through our New Jersey Department of Education state monitoring known as QZAC. Evelyn carefully monitored enrollment at each school and made critical recommendations to the superintendent in overcrowding situations and skillfully responded to parent concerns regarding placement requests. She participated in the planning of new classrooms and media centers in all school construction projects. And she was instrumental in the revisions at Churchill Junior High School, Hammerhill Middle School, and the new Memorial Elementary School. And these projects were Evelyn's pride and joy. Perhaps most notable was the path she created for students at East Brunswick High School to receive college credit. And our students are doing just that today. She served as a liaison to Middlesex County College, also known now as Middlesex College, resulting in high school seniors receiving college credit. And she forged similar relationships with other institutions and worked with a local Chinese school to develop a path for students receiving Chinese instruction to get credit in world language. Evelyn's favorite memories of her valuable work here include the district's achievement of 11 Blue Ribbon School Awards. And that is a distinction that we continue to tout today. The excitement of staff and students and parents for each of these awards and meeting the president of the White House was exciting for her, and we can imagine that. East Brunswick, becoming the first district in the state and nation to have all 11 schools named Blue Ribbon Schools, is a testament to Evelyn's guidance. She also acquired more grants than any other district administrator, and she worked with the staff on how to write successful grants. Her tireless work ethic in pushing for excellence was described as often inspiring and sometimes exhausting. But Evelyn was always motivated by the same desire to make East Brunswick Public Schools first-class. In Evelyn's words, "The opportunity to continuously work with the talented supervisors, principals, and technical staff to improve instruction for East Brunswick was incredible." Evelyn is also an accomplished author, as you already heard, of four books, and has conducted major studies and reports on what makes schools effective. And she is the author of The Nation's Best Elementary and Middle Schools and The Nation's Best Secondary Schools, published in 1994. She authored two guidebooks on completing the doctoral dissertation, which undoubtedly has contributed to the success of many doctors out there. Never one to rest, she continues to serve as a liaison and faculty member with Walden University, serving doctoral students. And she now lives, believe it or not, and we are all jealous of this, six months of the year in Florida and six months back in New Jersey, enjoying friends and working with her doctoral candidates. East Brunswick Public Schools will also value and treasure her work and will remember her words, "Great schools don't just happen. We have to make them." Congratulations, Evelyn. You all deserve honor.
I just want to thank everybody that came out. And it's been a long 31 years here, but it went very quickly. And the thing, the people that worked here were the people that made this happen. And with that, I have, like, my pack.
Congratulations again, Dr. Ogden. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. If you can enjoy. Okay, welcome back. It's nice to see your faces. The fun continues this evening because Dr. Ogden was such an important person in this district, as you all got to hear. And now, we're going to see some students from Churchill with a program that I'm very excited because I've been hearing about. So it's called the Butterfly Effect Kindness Project, correct? And who is going to be introducing? Come on up and please tell us more about it.
All right, good evening. It's lovely to be here. My name is Kathy Merton, and I teach 9th grade English at Churchill Junior High School. So the Butterfly Effect grant was inspired by a man named Chris Rosati from Durham, North Carolina. The 42-year-old father of two had just been diagnosed with ALS. In many ways, his story is tragic, but the way he chose to live the rest of his life was absolutely inspirational, an inspiration that is still affecting the lives of others today. One of the concepts that he decided to explore was the butterfly effect, in which one small action can lead to a much larger event. He decided to do this with kindness. He provided $50 mini-grants to interested young people with the stipulation that they do something kind with it. There was quite a return on his investment. This is the concept that we were inspired to bring to Churchill with the help of the East Brunswick Education Foundation, who saw the great potential in its impact on students' social and emotional wellness, school climate, the East Brunswick community, and even globally.
So when we first rolled this out in February, we had about 80-plus students, and we were absolutely thrilled that we had such a big turnout. What we discovered is that students have a great interest in helping their communities, but often they do not know how to become involved or they don't have the means to do so. With this grant, they created proposals, they researched project costs, planned their time and travel logistics, made contacts with people in various fields, all because they had a passion to do so. These students purchased for those in need, made and delivered care packages, visited pet shelters, and brought supplies. They made crafts and bracelets to lift the spirits of the sick and the disabled. These students made school improvements. They decorated our school inside and out with messages of positivity. They cleaned parks, fields, lakefronts. They visited assisted living facilities, doing crafts and activities with the residents. Some used the grants as a means to generate even more funding to causes that were even close to their hearts. Some of these creative and caring students are here tonight to share their experiences. So come on up, guys.
Thank you, East Brunswick Board of Education, for having me tonight. My name is Jada Harris, and I created the project Bracelets for Bambinos. I chose to partner with the Daisy Recreation because I believe every kid deserves to have fun. Daisy Recreation provides an environment where all kids, even kids with disabilities, can have a good time. I made 55 bracelets with green and black beads to represent the East Brunswick colors and one star bead to show each kid that they're a star. The Butterfly Project Kindness Initiative and Daisy Recreation have motivated me to support programs in my community that are making the world a kinder, better place in their own way. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kat Mentha, and this is Sophie Lowe. Nature is very important to us, and we feel as if it is our duty to protect it. We became aware of the butterfly effect, and we realized it was a good opportunity to connect with our passion.
So we called our project Project Escapade after a website we are working on called Escapade. And we started our project with a cleanup at the local park with a few of our friends. And we also did a sale outside of Kat's house. And altogether, in the end, we donated $230.40 to the World Wildlife Fund as a result of our efforts.
This is something that Sophie and I have always wanted to do, but we never really knew how to start. And this project gave us a good starting point and taught us what we need to do to pursue this in the future. It gives us a feeling of fulfillment to know that we are doing a good thing for our planet and making a positive impact on our world. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Chung, and I'm a member of the Butterfly Kindness Initiative. I'm so glad I was able to be part of this project because it encouraged me to do amazing things in this world. The first day they announced this club in the morning announcements, they played a video of a man giving students $50 each. In my mind at the time, I was a bit skeptical how $50, a $50 bill could change the world. Doing this project proved me wrong. To be completely honest, I started this project for this whole reason of having fun. Don't get me wrong, I had an amazing time, but I learned a lot more than just having $50 to spend. Many people donated money, but me and my partner decided to do something that we could interact with seniors. So we started with finding a senior home in East Brunswick, and we started talking to people who worked there. We connected to people from Sunrise Assisted Living. We tried putting ourselves in their shoes and how they lived the same activities every single day and how the pandemic created isolation and how they couldn't visit others. So we decided to do a fun activity for them. We met up with someone who worked at Sunrise and shared our ideas. After several weeks of being put on hold, we finally got a yes. Days after we started buying supplies, we filled up each pot, over 40, and decorated each pot with markers and stickers and make sure that each of them had our names on it so they felt special. I wasn't fully satisfied with the thought that planting kits could change the world until we received an email three days later with an album filled with seniors smiling and having fun. That is when I made the right choice to join this club. Not only did it put a smile on their face, but it put a smile on mine. With that being said, yes, a small change can change, a small thing can change the world. Thank you, Mrs. Morton and Mrs. Weinstein, for giving this opportunity for me to help others. And I hope that this could be something that could be continued in Churchill. Thank you.
So this is a poster board we made of our project. And you can see pictures of our cleanup and of the sale on it.
So lots of messages of perseverance, positivity, you know, coming after our time, particularly in January, you know, when the kids were back in virtual, a little PTSD, I think, was happening. And when this project came through, I said to Kathy and Edie, I was like, "This is exactly what the kids need right now." I know they had planned it for, before the pandemic even, but, you know, it's almost like even more beneficial to have it happen now. I came into this because April is National Poetry Month. And as they were kind of getting things going with the kids, they also had teachers, they were passing out butterflies to everybody to write just positivity and kindness affirmations that could be hung in the lobby at Churchill. So all of these butterflies were in the lobby there at Churchill. And I just kept thinking to myself, like, are the students reading them? How can we get them to read them and like really, you know, get a sense of why there's all these colorful butterflies in the lobby in case they didn't get the message? So I said to Kathy, I just sent her a quick email, and I was like, "What if we had the kids go down there and just write quick poems in response to, you know, these positive messages?" I had, the EBEF had funded a grant for me to have a Dodge poet come and visit the classroom also, so it kind of went into that. And, you know, if anything, this project, the poet who came kept saying, you know, "It's not thinking just outside of the box, but beyond the box." And this project really does that. So the students went down and wrote some poems, and some went home and worked on them and turned them in. And at the gala, because they had a gala event for it, they laid them out and recited some of the poems and read them. And so one of my students, Maddie Sauvigny, is gonna come and read one of the poems that she wrote.
Okay, hi, my name is Maddie Sauvigny. I wrote a poem for my 9th grade honors English class. I do confess, I never enjoyed poetry before this, but I tried to keep an open mind as I was writing it. Mrs. Clerk, how does go down and look at some of the kindness project proposals that were in the lobby of the school? Prior to this, I knew one friend from my track team who was building a bench to put at the East Brunswick High School track. So I wrote this poem about him. "My bench was beautiful. The sturdy wood had a stunning state. For weeks, I waited eagerly to take it to the track. Finally, the bench I had labored to build could be admired and used by the athletes I loved. I took so much pride in my kind deed. I knew that while it was an undemanding task, the effect of the bench has on myself and my fellow runners was unchangeable." I felt like this really communicated how all these kids felt about the kindness project. It was something that, like, they couldn't take away. It was really nice, and I'm sorry that I didn't get a chance to participate in it. Thank you.
Very talented students and a great program. Thank you also to the EBEF for funding this. This really was a neat and different way for our talented students to show... for our talented students to show that kindness really can change the world. And if you are this kind in ninth grade, then you're going to do wonderful things and hopefully you will change the world when you become adults. So please keep that kindness in your heart as you grow. And Ms. Megan, so in a couple of years, you'll be at the high school, actually, in a year, I guess. So we have our new student representative here this evening. So you're going to hear a sneak peek at what is going on at EBHS by our brand-new rep, Ms. Megan.
Hello. Okay. Hi, guys, my name is Megan. I'm the new student rep. Today's my first day, technically.
Hey, happy birthday. You know why she did that? So for next year, we'll remember.
Was this my anniversary? Yeah, June sixteenth, okay. I'm feeling a little underwhelming after all those amazing projects, but I'll give it a go. So recently, at the high school, we've just been winding down with the end of the school year. So we had a very successful prom on June third and the senior sunset on June ninth. So for those of you who don't know, all the seniors just went outside in the field and they signed yearbooks and just pretty much chilled for the evening. Finals started yesterday and will be continuing through Monday with graduation on the twenty-second. A lot of seniors are relaxing because they have exemptions and I'm very jealous. But some of them are doing all the things they wanted to do before graduation. So actually, just a small note, today during my calc period, we were exempt from our exam. So a bunch of us went down with the seniors and they were painting a mural in the terminal. And one of them actually started drawing it in their sophomore year before the pandemic hit. So they took this opportunity to kind of finish that. So I thought that was really nice. If you stop by the high school, you can see it. And also today was the tennis team's individual state championships. And just an interesting thing was that one of the, in the state championships, it was actually EB versus EV. So we pretty much kind of took it over. So props to the boys tennis team. They're pretty, they're pretty cool. Everyone's kind of excited for next year's esports team. If you guys don't know that's happening, it's kind of different, but we have some students who are definitely advocating for that. So everyone's pretty excited. Just as another small note, so recently, we've been having our homeroom representatives notify all the students about the upcoming bell schedule changes. And currently, what I'm hearing from that is that we're all spreading the word and everyone's kind of adjusting to the schedule. I think the feedback we've been getting is that everyone's just trying to balance the different clubs and sports and work schedules that they have. So we'll see how that works. And also, congratulations to the yearbook club at the high school and I'm sure every other yearbook club in the district. They did a phenomenal job. We have a beautiful yearbook and everybody's been going around signing them. And on that note, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all the teachers and staff and you guys for a very splendid school year. It's been a long run, but it was a good one. So we'll see you guys next year with that.
Great job, Megan, on your first report. It will only get easier from here. Okay, this brings us to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. A participant is limited to three minutes' duration. A lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the board secretary. And I just want to remind everyone, this is the public's time to speak to the Board of Education. If there are questions that are going to be asked this evening, we will make sure that either Karen or Janet have your information after you speak so they can get some information to you afterwards because this is, again, a listening experience for the Board of Education. So is there anyone that would like to speak to the board this evening? Come on up to the podium. And for our speakers tonight, if you could just remember when you get to the podium, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Elbostie. I live at five Jason Drive, obviously in East Brunswick. Dr. Valesky and members of the board, thank you for taking time out to listen to me today. I am mother to three children, Omar, Maryam, and Ali Al Samra. Omar attends Hammershold's and Maryam and Ali attend Central. They have expressed to me their desire to be able to celebrate their holiday Eid without having to worry about making up work or returning to tests. This motivated me to create a committee to request Eid off from our schools. Many of those committee members are here tonight and we, as well as community members at large. And we are hoping to hear good news that our holiday will be incorporated into the school calendar as a day off. With over one hundred Muslim families in East Brunswick and over two hundred absences in the district due to Eid al-Fitr this past May, it is time to make a meaningful change that recognizes our presence within the community. And with your permission, I'd like to read the letter that we submitted to the Board of Education and to Dr. Valesky yesterday. So the letter is dated May twenty-fifth. Dear members of the East Brunswick Board of Education, the East Brunswick Education Association, and Dr. Valesky, we hope that you are well and staying safe from the global COVID pandemic that has sheen in our world over the past two years. We want to express our great appreciation for all the administrators and educators who undertook the task of providing a secure and safe environment to learn through such unforeseeable adversity. And now focusing on the social and emotional well-being of our children. The experience of a pandemic reminds us that we are all a part of one human condition that lives and breathes together. As we start to breathe a little easier now with the benefits of new medications and widespread vaccination underway, our focus can now shift to include what else binds us together as a community in our daily lives. We've transitioned to normalcy in schools for our children and the enrichment of their growth as members of our diverse national and global world. Preparation for entering this world starts now in our children's formative years. It starts with not only what they learn in the classrooms, but also the events they experience throughout their childhood and teenage years. It helps to determine what feels usual and acceptable. Take one step further. It determines what values are cherished and celebrated. This forms the foundation for our efforts to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion into our curriculum so that we can prepare all our children for an evolving and dynamic future with a sense of conscientiousness for the rich heterogeneity of life experiences in our communities. With that, we reach out with the purpose of recognizing the Muslim holidays, Eid al-Fitr, that was celebrated on May second, and Eid al-Athha, the major holidays of the Islamic faith. Eid al-Fitr celebrates the culmination of Ramadan, a month-long tradition of fasting from sunrise to sunset. Ramadan teaches adherents to feel for their fellow brethren in humanity who suffer from poverty and starvation.
I'm sorry, time is up.
Thank you very much for your time. And I hope that you complete the reading of that letter.
Thank you, Nancy. Yes, we all did receive copies. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the board this evening?
Hello, Kayla DeCico, Twenty-Fourth Street.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your first name?
Kayla DeCico.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to say that my husband and I both grew up in East Brunswick and we love it here and we truly value the school district and the public school system, which is why we decided to stay here and raise our three daughters here. I want to bring up again the sexual education standards that have come into play. I've been reviewing the current curriculum with my daughter's elementary school, with the principal and the school psychologists, and I find it to be very age-appropriate. It's already very inclusive with the main message being respect and acceptance for all, which I love and I think that's the way it should be. There's also a big premise of anti-bullying, which, again, I think is a super important focus and message to give kids, to never bully anybody because of any differences that they may have from you. I'm just wondering why can't we keep it as it is? I feel like it's working. It includes everybody. It's a really great message. And I'm concerned that come September, certain things are going to change as far as that goes. I know that a couple of other school districts in New Jersey have decided not to adopt the new curriculum. And I'm wondering if East Brunswick has any idea which direction we're going to be going as far as that goes. I know that a request was put in to postpone these new standards for another year and reevaluate its appropriateness. And I just wanted to touch base and see, you know, where we stand with that. It was also brought to my attention from a few East Brunswick teachers that a lot of the time when there's a curriculum change, they won't find out till a couple of days before school starts in September, leaving them with very little time to research, learn the curriculum, and come up with lesson plans. So I'm just wondering if the teachers don't find out, you know, what they're going to be teaching until a few days before school starts, then when can the parents find out? So that's about it. Thank you.
Kayla, if you want to leave your information with Karen or Janet?
Oh, you have it, okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Come on up.
Hello, how are you? Kelly Calaher, ninety-four Independence Drive. As the school year comes to an end, I want to continue to make aware the concerns myself and many other parents have about the new incoming sex ed and LGBTQ-inclusive curriculum. Aside from several private conversations that I've had, I really haven't heard anything publicly further about the changes to come. And I understand that many of my concerns are really coming from a higher-up legislation. However, as a resident, I'm not in a position to have my voice truly heard or recognized by such legislation. Instead, I'm here conveying my issues to you, a Board of Elected Individuals, with the hope that you can stand up on behalf of myself and others and on behalf of individual family values. Beliefs vary from family to family, child to child. And for the public schools to introduce the teaching of a belief system is frankly unethical. It's our decision to choose when and how to introduce sexual content and controversial material, not the legislation, not the schools. The right for each family to choose the time and way to discuss such topics must not be taken away from us. Many people are increasingly losing trust in the public school systems, opting for homeschooling or, if finances allow, even private school education. Allowing these topics to be integrated across the curriculum, especially at the elementary level, will only further that mistrust. As a board, I understand you're given flexibility in building the curriculum based on these state guidelines. And you've also informed us that, once assembled, we will be presented with the new material. However, it's simply not enough to just inform parents after the fact, even with the opt-out option. Opting out not only does little to deter our children from being exposed to inappropriate topics, but it deliberately excludes them from the classroom altogether, including subject matter within the lesson that many of us may find beneficial. With such controversial topics being introduced in the new guidelines, parents and families ought to have a right to be involved in such decision-making and planning. As it currently stands, many of us are feeling like our hands are tied. You, however, have been elected to a position where you can make a difference, to use your stance to speak up for the children, the parents, and for the community. At the heart of that community are the families supporting their children themselves and one another, instilling the diverse values that they hold. Dear, if you allow these new guidelines to take course, you're undermining individual family values by taking away parental choice. It would be irresponsible not to acknowledge the many working parts of the public school system and its intertwignment with the state legislature. But I'm here tonight to challenge you to stand up to these controversial changes. Use your public-appointed position to stand up for individual family values. Leave these controversial topics to parents and restore trust within our public school system. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to?
Alex Fieldman, Six Doggo Road. I just wanted to echo my support to what these two finalists were talking about. There is a common thought that when something is recommended by the state that it is to be taken as a, not as a recommendation, but a strong, like, you're going to do this type of thing, which is not necessarily true. You know, the Board of Education's job is to do what's happening within the school district. It's not the state, it's a recommendation at the end of the day. It is the board's job to do that. And I was unaware of that for the longest time until I was talking to my state legislature. And he was explaining how, even though if things are made in law or a mandate is done, it's, the most important thing is that it's done at the local level where it's affected here. So I am looking forward to all the wonderful things that we could do within the school district. And it's wonderful to see other school districts doing the exact same thing, taking their own initiative and saying, this may not be good for our students, but we'll make, you know, amendment here or amendment there. Or they may just say flat out, no, it's not acceptable for our particular things, particular goals. So looking forward to what our particular school will do, the district, and looking forward to a fantastic future school year and a wonderful graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Dr. Zimbicki.
Good evening. Dana Zimbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. So it has been no secret that this year has been one of the most challenging, difficult years on a variety of issues. And, you know, it's been stressful on all of our staff and from top to bottom, without a doubt. But today was a good day. Today was a very good day. Today, Dr. Valesky and his team met with a group of representative teachers from Hammershold Middle School. And during these meetings, the administrative team listened to the concerns. They provided some sympathetic ear as well. And most importantly, they provided a path for more stakeholder involvement in the future. provided a path for more stakeholder involvement in the future. And it was so well received, and it made such a difference. And it was, it was a really good day. And I want to thank you for coming in, Dr. Valeski, you and your team. And I know that the staff, that some of them are here today, also appreciate that very, very much. And on another note, we have been six months, I think, talking about the restructuring and healthy start times and going back and forth. And I think today, we have finally put that issue to bed. So thank you. I am looking forward to productive start to the next school year, and looking forward to being collaborative as we move forward and bringing our stakeholders to the table. So thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening?
Hi, good evening. My name's Naran Sharaf. I live at 5 Shady Lane here in East Brunswick. Sorry, I wasn't preparing to talk today, so please forgive me, but I just wanted to kind of piggyback Nancy's request for our Eid holiday off to be put on the calendar. The reason why we ended up creating our committee to do it is because we found over the past couple of years, including myself, I've just moved to East Brunswick a year ago, and we're seeing a big growth in our very small Islamic community, starting to move to East Brunswick. It's a well-respected town. I moved just from Saraval. So it's important for us to be represented here in the town. We're growing, you know, a lot now, and we're, we've noticed that several neighboring townships, Saraval, Edison, South Brunswick, have all started incorporating our holiday into the calendar. And it's really important, especially for the older grades, the high school, the middle school students, that miss school have a lot of, you know, responsibilities with school. They start to feel stressed. They don't want to celebrate the holiday. So we're just trying to make it easy for them, and just make a statement and just show that we are also, you know, celebrating a very important holiday in our religion. And we just wanted to be acknowledged for that. So thank you for your time. And, you know, hopefully, if you guys have any questions, you can reach out to us directly. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Naran. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion and move on to our Board of Agenda items. Okay. May I please have a motion for the one item on our Board of Education agenda this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Winston, seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Bringing us to community programs, may I please have a motion for items one through four, community programs this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Chu, seconded by Mrs. Reese. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May I please have a motion for items one through five on curriculum and instruction?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hung, seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. May I please have a motion for items one through three on our facilities agenda? Mrs. Reese?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Winston, sorry.
No, was there somebody else before me?
No, no, no.
Just a quick question. What was the difference in the bid amounts, Ms. Juliana, do you know, on the, what was originally accepted and what is now accepted on number one of facilities? I know we rejected one. The initial bid was rejected due to a clerical error?
Yes, the original bid was rejected due to a clerical error. The bid award is for $2.7 million. The bid that was withdrawn by the company was $2.6 million.
Okay, difference of $100,000. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hung.
So the first one, so why the bids are so different, spread so wide? If we chose the lowest one, how can we control the quality?
The quality is specified within the bid specifications as we dictate exactly what needs to be provided. I think what happens, and this is just my instinct on this, having seen so many bids over the years, but there will usually be a very wide variety of costs. Some companies will bid very highly, simply to see what happens. Because if they, if they're, they happen to be the only bidder, or one of only a couple that are at the high level, they stand the chance to be awarded a very lucrative bid. It's all about the money.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. May I please have a motion for tonight's financial services, one through thirteen. Mrs. Gloss?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion?
Yes, on number, on number three, bill list, turning to that packet, to page seventeen, yep, page seventeen. For Parret Somgen Architects, I see a bill pay this time of $182,000. Ms. Juliana, can you please talk to me a little bit about what that, some of the projects and what that was for?
Just give me one moment while I pull that document. So these are for services related to a multitude of projects. So the projects that are currently in process are window replacements. That is for the entirety of Churchill Junior High School, Chittick Elementary School, Frost Elementary School, and Warrens Dorfer Elementary School. That is a replacement of all exterior windows and doors at those locations. It is, we have rooftop unit replacements for Hammershold, where that is a rather substantial project as well. As a matter of fact, that's a bid award on this evening's agenda. We have rooftop units for, I believe it's thirty classrooms at East Brunswick High School. That's a substantial project.
[laughing]
Mrs. Reese is our cheerleader.
Very excited about that.
We have, oh my goodness, just give me a moment here. Oh, the, oh, how could I forget this? The temporary classroom units, which will be thirty-two new classrooms at Churchill Junior High School. That is another project in process. There are various other projects that are also in process, and it also includes the preliminary planning stages related to a new high school, which involves examinations of the site, doing testing, examining the topography, looking at traffic flow, and a multitude of other things that have to be done before we can even get into looking at, will a building fit where we think it will fit, and then talking about what that building might look like. There are many preliminary steps to be addressed beforehand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Juliana, if you could, just clarify that the board, what the board had approved in terms of the architectural planning, but that does not include a new high school.
Correct. So, you know, the, the community has heard discussion, some discussion at the board level regarding preparation for a potential bond referendum. There's been no vote at this point with regard to a bond referendum. Before we can even put that question forward, even for the board to act, there is work to be done in advance. That work is doing the assessments that I mentioned a few minutes ago, the preliminary planning, eventually the development of a schematic of what that building will look like, but not the specifications regarding, we'll call it the bricks and mortar, that go into it. It's basically coming up with a plan for what a building would look like, what the site work is that's required, and what that cost would be. And it's all based on, because the state will not approve it otherwise, it's all based on what is the anticipated enrollment that this building needs to house. Because we will only be able to build for what we know will have, not what we think will have. Hope that makes sense.
No, that, well, can I, can I just follow up with Dr. Valeski? Can I just, I just ask a quick question on that then. Is there then, based on that description of the need that you just described, is there a budget in place of any sort that the taxpayers and that we can anticipate spending before this ever comes to a boil, when we're really ready to start acting on it?
So at that point in time, there will be a budget for it.
Right now?
Right now, there is not a budget.
So there's no idea of what the spend will be at this time for the preliminary work?
Well, no. What the spend will be right now is what the board has approved. The board has approved the engagement of the, of the architect. That was done already.
Understood.
So the architect is working under what the board has already approved. So that is in place. The architectural work involves engineering, the site examinations, all the necessary components, the DEP, site investigations for, for things like creeks and water setbacks, and is there any kind of endangered species on the site and so forth? So those are the things that all have to be examined. The board has already approved that. The contract was awarded several months ago, and so we've been moving along with that. That's really going to be the extent of the spend in the preparation, because that will take us through what we will need to ultimately make a decision on where we go. And part of that will also be developing, development of what are the cost estimates for the project.
No, I understand. And treating it in two separate issues, which I think you've been very clear in what you're talking about regarding the preliminary work that needs to be done, I don't question, and I do have an understanding of area development. So I do appreciate what you described would be the job list, lack of a better word, before we could actually go to that point. My question involves the finances. I know you said we approved the activity with the architect. My question is, are there any checkpoints along the way or expectations of total spend of taxpayer dollars on this preliminary work? That could, because right now, the numbers are going up. Last time, it was ninety thousand for this particular architect without a breakout. Today, we've doubled that from the last meeting. So two weeks ago, it was, I think, ninety. This one is one eighty.
So what we're looking at in the, in the bill list is for a multitude of projects. If you're looking specifically with regard to high school project planning, and I don't have the, the contract in front of me, so I can't refer to a specific dollar amount.
Okay.
But, but that scope of work that the board approved included a specific dollar amount.
It did.
And what that breakdown was, yes.
I don't recall what that is.
So there's a, there's a capitation there.
If you can get that, I would appreciate that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss?
Yes.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lax?
Yes, motion carries. Bringing us to Human Resources, may I please have a motion for items one through three? You'll notice you got an addendum earlier this evening. Moved by Mr. Winston, seconded by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll poll vote. Will you please call the roll, Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss?
Yes.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Lax?
Yes, motion carries. May I please have a motion for Student Services, items one through five?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reese, seconded by Mrs. Gloss. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Mrs. Reese.
So I see, you know, this is pretty routine, and we have different bus services that we use through the year. Just a question, those that we use, these, some of them are newer names, which I don't recognize, are they trained? Like, is some of the rules that our own bus drivers do, just?
That's the next group of items.
Oh, good.
This is on Student Services.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm off.
That's okay.
I'm off on the old and the new. All right, so save that for later. Thank you.
I'll remember the question.
I'll remember the question. Okay, any other discussion on Student Services? No? Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Hung.
Yes, when I reviewed out-of-district placement, I realized that the cost for one student is about $200,000, several about $150,000. So that is quite good money. So my question is, we definitely need to help those students and those families. Can we find a way can help those family at the same time lower the cost, such as we can keep those students inside the school district, we educate them here?
Mr. Hung, and I'll let Dr. Figueroa discuss this even further, but one of the, this is probably really important for the, the general community. When we talk about out-of-district placements for students, the providers for those services are not restrained from what they can charge, and they are not restrained from what they can escalate their fees from year to year. So we have seen unprecedented increases in costs for out-of-district placements. But we do have students that are referred to out-of-district placements for therapeutic settings, where we do not have the human resources or the materials to properly serve those students. We do always strive to provide students and their families with a least restrictive environment. And we, we have for years been bringing programs back into East Brunswick, and, and that does a number of benefits. It integrates our special education population with the general ed population. They're among their peer groups, they stay within East Brunswick, their families are close by, and everything is localized. But as we have seen, we have seen people leaving the profession across the board. And so the human resources to provide some of these services is getting scarce in some cases. And our special education department struggles from time to time to find out-of-district placements that will accept students, that they have any openings. So that's, that's one of the biggest challenges we have right now. But we are always striving to bring programs that we can into the district, because we have a proven track record of containing cost. So Dr. Figueroa, do you want to?
That's a very good answer, Dr. Valeski. But I'd like to just add that.
You can say thank you then, okay.
Every student and their IP is reviewed by our district specialists to make sure that if there are students that we can keep in district, that's always, as Dr. Valeski so aptly said, that's always our first choice. Sometimes, we cannot do that based on the needs of those individual students. And the costs are agreed. They are quite astronomical at times. And as Dr. Valeski said in the beginning of his points, the, there is no way for us to keep those costs down. They have no limit. There's no 2% limit, there's no 3% limit. They just can basically charge whatever it is that they feel they want to charge. And many a times, and, and Mr. Juliana has seen this as well, we'll get a bill the year after we've paid to say, well, the services that were rendered, you didn't give us enough money, we need even more. And that's, that's all proper and legal as, as the, as it goes at this time, unfortunately.
And, and Mr. Juliana will, wants to make a remark about facilities, but I will tell you, we have advocated to the state, to the legislature, about this situation, that there is no containment in the cost. And so far, we have not been successful, but we have lobbied Superintendent of Middlesex County with our legislative bodies and with the Department of Education to get at least a voice about this concern that is going to impact many districts for the future and will have negative impacts on our budgets.
So I'd like to add a couple of remarks, but Dr. Figueroa just reminded me, as he was talking about the escalation in costs, my office, within the last week or two, has received at least two letters from, from schools telling us that the, the anticipated cost, the estimated tuition costs would be going up above what the estimates were, because what they're seeing is that the enrollment in those programs is dropping, for whatever reason. Folks moving out, maybe programs developing in those districts. But the per pupil cost is driven by how many students are in that program. So the fewer students in a particular program at another school district or private school, the more the per pupil cost will be. And we've just received a couple of notices on that. With regard to facilities, I'm going to take us back a little bit, because remember, we're going through for next year a grade realignment. And part of that was because we haven't had no room at the elementary schools. Now, even with making that grade realignment, we've spent months doing the planning with principals at the elementary schools for how the facilities will be utilized. There's virtually no room at the elementary schools. We cannot create programs in district if we don't have the space. That's a reality. And so if there's no space, the only alternative that we have is an out-of-district placement. I think that's an important point for the board and the community to understand.
Okay, Mrs. Ju, Mrs. Gloss?
Is this, this list of placements, is this our complete list of all district students?
That's the snapshot as of the point in time this agenda is put together. This list will change.
Right.
Because as child study teams continue their work, as you know.
Yes.
They will come up with more placements as are needed.
But at this point in time, this is a comprehensive list? I just wanted to add, from my own, not as a board member, but just from my own professional experience, I'm counting thirty placements in a district of eight thousand students. That's phenomenal. It really is a very, I agree.
Yes.
The cost, the cost is incredibly high per pupil, and it is very, very hard. They're very accurate in how difficult it is to find placements. And the more specific a student's needs are, the more difficult the placement is, and the more the district, or the more the out-of-district schools can charge. But to only have thirty students at this point in time says a lot about what we're doing in district for the students.
Yes, we just wanted to say that, and thank you, Ms. Gloss, for that, that if you see on Part One of Student Services, these are two new student placements. On Part Three of the out-of-district placements, this is a continuation of placement for students that we have. So these are not brand-new students. These are students that we do have as part of our program out of district. Now, as Mr. Juliana said, this will change, but we still have reduced the number of out-of-district students. And I really, you know, in terms of what Mr. Juliana said, I don't see room for us to do much more in that regard, but we will still continue to try whenever we can.
Okay, thank you. Very good answer. Thank you. Hopefully.
There was a very long answer to your question.
Difficult question. Is there any other discussion? Okay, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss?
Yes.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Lax?
Yes, motion carries. Bringing us to Mrs. Reese's Transportation Services. May I please have a motion for items one through six, and you'll notice the shared services agreement with the township was sent earlier. And you'll notice the Shared Services Agreement with the Township was sent earlier.
So, move.
Moved by Mrs. Reese. Second by Mrs. Gloss. And I will start discussion. I'm going to assume Mrs. Reese would like to start.
Thank you. I was a little early.
Yes. Now you're in on time.
So, yeah, so these, uh, different, uh, different, um, companies, maybe we could just have explained to us, uh, for the purpose of the public as well, um, there are different companies that East Brunswick uses. I know we tried to use as many of our own folks as possible with developing our fleet. And we're very lucky to have Joyce Forsberg leading that, um, who does an amazing job. But sometimes I, you know, we get feedback that some of, uh, these companies, uh, could use a little more of that good touch that our folks have. So, um, is there, do we do some kind of beginning of the school orientation? We probably do, you know, but for folks to know that.
We do. Um, the Transportation Department, uh, management does, uh, meet with the, um, each of the contractors. Um, we have a group meeting, go through, uh, our, our processes, our procedures, what our expectations are. Those things are also delineated within the bid specifications, but it's important to have that, that refresh. And it's not just done at the time of a contract award. This is something that occurs annually, the meeting with contractors. This group of contractors that are on the agenda, um, we've dealt with these contractors in the past. Um, so that's, um, uh, that's something in terms of, um, uh, to, to keep in mind that, that we have experience with, uh, I, I would say every single one of these contractors.
Okay, good.
We, um, did enhance our bid specifications, uh, one of the, because we were working under old specifications in the past and those contracts are renewed over a period of time. And you can't amend some of those requirements that were originally bid. But since we went out to a new bid, we did enhance, uh, and one of the things that was enhanced was, um, the camera systems on the buses. Our own buses have, um, multiple camera systems on them, which not only monitor the interior of the buses, they monitor looking forward from the bus, in the rear and on the sides. Many of the contracted services did not do that. That is now a requirement. So, all the contracted services will need to have the same camera systems as we have. Because whenever there's an incident, we like to go to the, to the video. And so, if we're only working off the two-camera system, we're not going to see everything that's going on. So, they're now going to be required to have all the, uh, similar systems. I hope that helps.
That does help, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rex.
Um, just, just for a point of clarification, I know several weeks back or several meetings back, we did, uh, of course, approve the, uh, the schedule change that, uh, which would require the two-tier busing. Is that this, uh, am I, am I looking, I know there was a rush to bid, I, so I just want to tie these two things together, uh, speak a little bit about that. Um, these are the bids that came back because you had mentioned at the time,
Yes.
the importance of getting these out to bid. I assume this is the result of that bid. And that's part one. Part two, I'm impressed by the increase only being at 1.91%, considering, um, uh, what the actual increase is, particularly surrounding energy cost, uh, right now. So, uh, if that was negotiated, nicely done. And, um, and, and, uh, lastly, does this tie together, uh, which would in some way celebrate Doctors Ambicki's comments tonight, that we're getting closer? So, so this seems to be the last, uh, am I right? The last hanging thread that needed to be tied up?
So, um, that was a compound question.
It's perfect, yeah.
But you know the answer all.
So, let me, so, uh, let me begin with the 1.91%. Um, that's on the bid renewals, uh, not the, the new bid.
Okay.
That's, that's contract renewals. The new bid, uh, is, the costs are higher.
Okay.
But we anticipated that the costs would be higher. Um, and, um, it is based on a two-tier bus system that will address the change in the school times as we had, um, had previously discussed. Um, this was, um, a challenge getting this out to bid. Uh, because I, I, we had heard that some of our neighboring districts were about to put out very large bids as well. So, when I heard that, I wanted to get out in front of them and make sure we had our bid opening beforehand. Um, because there are only a certain amount of contractors out there. And if those districts were successful in having their bid openings first and we were lagging behind, I was concerned that we were already a little bit late. But if we were behind those other districts and they're large districts, I don't know what we would have gotten. We're, we're satisfied with the cadre of contractors that we have. But it will address the two-tier busing. And as Doctors Ambicki alluded to earlier, um, we have, um, uh, the opportunity, uh, later this evening, after we have our own review in closed session, uh, to approve a couple of memorandum of agreements.
Do these companies guarantee the amount of drivers?
They're, they're required to provide the drivers necessary to run the routes that they are assigned. There are penalties built into the bid specifications that if, um, they don't provide, can't meet the expectation, there's not just, um, the cost that they would be paid, that they don't get paid, but there are penalties on top of that. But penalties aren't worth the aggravation to parents and to the district for not being able to provide transportation services. Um, I will say this, based on what I'm seeing with the bid results, I think one of the things, a project that, that I have on my tickler list for the next year, and I've mentioned this to Dr. Valesky, is we're going to take another look at cost-benefit and what's the break-even point for bringing more back in-house? Uh, because I suspect we will be coming to the board during the next, next budget cycle to do just that.
And that was the point I just wanted to simply make, that we have been talking about this. And we, we have shared with the board in previous budget discussions about our path to really, uh, bring more of our own on, more drivers, more buses. And I'm very proud of the fact, and I think this board should be too, of your support operations facility. That's, that's a facility, but the people that drive your buses, our employees, are top-notch all around. And, you know, they're, you, you, I think every day about security. We think about security in our buildings. But you think too, when you, when you transport a child from portal to portal, that security begins with that ride on the bus and that ride home until they're in their parents' care again. And our drivers take that very seriously. And Mr. Juliana has, has equipped those drivers with state-of-the-art buses and technology that will assist them. But they are a well-trained bunch of people and they know how to respond to a situation. And they are, they are professional with, just across the board. 100% of my problems with buses come from our contracted services. So, just kudos to them and to Joyce Forsberg and her team, uh, for the management oversight they provide there.
Absolutely. And to Mr. Juliana for always thinking ahead and making sure that we're not caught...
When, when it comes to transportation, it is Joyce Forsberg and her team. Um, they are, to say that they're dedicated would be an absolute understatement. Um, that's not a job I want or would ever want.
You kind of have that job.
In, um, no.
I don't know, has she been on the buses at 4:00 AM though? I'm not sure.
No.
She may have him on that one.
But I, I, I appreciate everything that, that she and, and the team do because they,
Absolutely.
they love the kids of this district. Absolutely.
Are there any talks about how to get more bus drivers? How do we get more?
For us? Well, we're staffed, but I'm looking at what we could do down the road. So, stay tuned. How was that for a compound answer?
I'm just wondering if you're getting your CDL license to drive a bus?
Actually, we, we, we had talked about it.
We've had this conversation?
I got stuck on that.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I will not, I will not get my CDL.
Just to be clear.
No. And just to be clear, I will not get my CDL.
Oh, that's very funny. Okay, is there any other discussion on facilities?
On transportation.
On transportation, I'm sorry. Say, look at that, Barbara.
Made me feel good.
We all do it, right? Okay, um, all in favor?
We'll need a roll, uh, roll poll because we also have the Shared Services on here.
Of the Shared Services, I apologize. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yep.
President Lacks.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. So, this brings us to new and or old business committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. And I'm actually going to start out, um, by letting you all know that before the meeting, Dr. Valesky and I went over to the Community Arts Center for the Sculpture Reveal Ceremony, um, from the Arts Commission. And Karen Baum made a beautiful sculpture. I would suggest everyone get over to the Arts Center to see this. And it was called Six Feet Apart. And it was about the pandemic and how our communicate, community came together. And we were actually pleasantly surprised because we saw tonight how talented our students are. Not only did they have Dr. Sala would speak, Mayor Cohen spoke, um, and of course, the artist herself, but we were treated to two of our students. We had a young girl, um, who was there, fifth grader at Erwin, I think she was from, did she say?
I don't think she said. I don't know.
Angela.
I don't know where Angela is.
Yes, Erwin.
Is Erwin.
Yes. So, Angela, with the poise of a fifth grader, I couldn't believe it. Um, and there are some, you know, over and under on, uh, whether she's going to end up being mayor of this town one day. That was one of the things that was tossed out there. And Austin, our salutatorian. Thank you, salutatorian, this is why I wasn't salutatorian, um, is going to Stanford, which is always such an exciting, um, thing for here at East Brunswick. That's kind of one of the Holy Grail schools. So, they both spoke beautifully, it was really a treat. Um, it really talks about the schools and the township working together to get through this pandemic and what we all had to do as a community. Um, and as I said, I would suggest that for you all, get over there to the Community Arts Center and check it out. Um, I brought the program with me, if anyone would like to see it later. And that was my, uh, that was our pregame for today. So, do we have any, um, reports?
Committee.
Committee report, Mr. Winston.
I was, uh, in yet another amazing meeting of Community Services with Ann Marie Gilbert. Uh, I wish everybody in this township could be a part of that meeting. The things that she is doing with that group, with cooperation, uh, between ELA, morning and aftercare, uh, ESL Citizenship, uh, the enrichment classes, they're introducing forensics this year. Um, yeah, forensics. Uh, when I was in school, I think the most exciting thing was dodgeball. So, uh, to know that this and many others, unfortunately, I left my other notebook at home. I took four pages of notes in an hour and 10-minute meeting. And my entire walk away, uh, takeaway from the entire thing is, oh my God. You know, she is just so awesome and the passion that she brings to that role, uh, we are so lucky, uh, so lucky as a district to have her. So, um, if you don't know anything about it, you have kids who need morning aftercare. I know we're moving out of Hammershold for, uh, what is it, the ELA, right?
Correct.
Uh, and, uh, going to all of the elementary schools less frost, if I understand correctly. I'm working on memory, which is pretty good. Um, awesome stuff. So, anybody in need in this community, morning care, aftercare, enrichment classes, anything along those lines, she's waiting for your call.
And forensic.
And, and forensics, and forensics, yeah. Told my kids, you have no excuse. So, um, so that's that. So, kudos to the district, kudos to, to her and everything she brings.
Thank you. Very good report, and the, uh...
So, the forensic, uh, program is so welcomed. I tried to enroll my three boys there, it's four.
Oh.
We cannot get in.
It's great, right? Yeah, yeah.
Actually, in that meeting, she was talking about that most of the programs have waiting lists already, that this lots just fill up almost immediately.
Yeah.
They're just amazing programs.
Right, uh, yeah, Ms. Gloss was in that meeting, so keep me honest, not anything I might have missed, yeah.
No, you were right.
You remember, oh, as you mentioned, for older kids, maybe you want to mention that.
What, what was that? I probably have it in my notes, but I did forget something. What was it? Okay.
How she's saying that she wants to try to extend the programs to the older kids as well, since you mentioned the younger kids, right?
Right.
Saying like Churchill and the high schools, she wants to make available, um, and it did, we have already, but additional programs. So, just to piggyback on what he said, it just was an amazing number of programs.
Did she also mention, I, I know, um, in the past, when they've had really popular programs that closed out early, did they, did she mention possibly bringing in a second, um, you know, a section of it or doing it, um, maybe later in the year so that more kids can be involved?
I don't recall anything, anything like that, but if she's listening, I bet she just started doing that. So, it would be based on her, her energy and, uh, attention to detail.
All right, you'll, you'll, uh, go in second round.
I think, I think you'll find Ann Marie is very responsive to parent, um, feedback. And, um, you know, last year, we were so impressed during, you know, times of shutdown. We had, um, you know, things set up for students when we, we actually were closed. Uh, we had our remote learning centers that we set up. Ann Marie was responsible for that. Over last summer, she kind of customized programs that were very short in duration for some students. So, students got to select from a lot of different variety and were locked into a week-long experience.
Yep.
And I think that was well-received by parents. So, she is a responsive and creative thinker.
I just, I thought it was amazing. I really did, I just thought it was awesome.
That's terrific. Any other reports or for the cause?
Just, uh, point of business, new business?
Sure.
Point of new business, uh, Policy 0155, uh, calls for the ability of, uh, of the board to vote the formation of a committee, uh, one of which I've been excited about seeing formed. And I think it's come time that, uh, I'd like to bring this to the board and offer a motion of the formation of a committee that would be reporting back to the board, to the public, uh, regarding it, uh, spends on things like architectural, uh, particularly around the high school and other things that were mentioned in Mr. Juliana's list. So, again, I'm citing Policy 0155. Uh, I am offering a motion, looking for a second, on the formation of this committee, uh, and, uh, and have it put in place and have the committee placed by the board president, uh, by next meeting. And I... You, I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll let the board president run from here.
Um, so, just, I guess, do I ask for discussion? Is this like any other motion or...
Yeah, it's the same. You have a, a motion, a second.
Yep, okay.
Now you have just open for discussion and then there'll be a vote.
Okay, any discussions?
Could you explain the policy again? What was 01? I'm not familiar with 0155.
Uh, Policy 0155.
I'll just pull it up right now.
Is it policy or bylaw?
It's a bylaw.
A bylaw, I didn't say policy, I'm sorry, bylaw, 0155.
The Board of Education authorizes the creation of committees of board members charged to conduct studies, make recommendations to the board enacted in advisory capacity, then on our, um, the president shall appoint people to serve on the committees. An ad hoc committee may be created and charged at any time by the president or majority of the board members present in voting. The board, the president shall appoint members to any committee so created and charged. Members shall serve until the committee is discharged. So, that's what you're setting to the ad hoc, an ad hoc committee.
Create, uh, what I've been requesting for six months.
Right, yeah, so, so this is...
The creation of an ad hoc committee for that purpose and then placed, uh, by membership of the board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so either the president can do it or a majority of the board members present in voting can create an ad hoc committee. I think the purpose is really tied to the, the, the possible referendum for the high school?
Among others, I mean, we are spending a lot on now this, this, uh, this particular, I don't have the name in front of me, but this particular architectural company. I think most of the project, uh, all the projects are exciting. Uh, I did hear a cheer out of, uh, my colleague to the left on one of the things that the architect was doing, uh, among other things. And I think those are the things that I think by committee, uh, is very important for the public, for the students, for all stakeholders to know, uh, along with the high school.
Yeah, I, I mean, so, just so we're clear, you guys have a facilities and transportation standing committee. So, you have standing committees that, that live by bylaw. This does, usually, like, if you're talking about, I don't know, replacement of windows at Erwin or, or replacement of HVAC on, um, Hammershold, that would go under your current facilities.
Fair enough.
But I think what this should really be, if you're going to do an ad hoc, it should be charged with really the costs, the division, whatever is relative to the, the, the construction of a potentially new high school tied in with the bond referendum. So, it would be an ad hoc committee tied to the, the new high school.
I, I would, I, I'll stand corrected.
That would be my recommendation.
I would, I would say yes on that. And that is my request. And I think it's valuable for everybody. I think it's valuable for this board. I think it's valuable for the public as we get closer. I think it'll be a lot, uh, it'll streamline the process for, if we do in fact go to referendum. I know there've been comments made by the Township Administration of having some creative way of, of, of paying for all of this. All of this is really good committee stuff and really good for communication purposes. Uh, it would be my hope that the board would see the importance of transparency and communication with all stakeholders in this township, on staff. Uh, and I hope that they... And I hope that they would support this motion. I think it's time that we have this as we continue down the path of a high school replacement.
The one thing I will say is that the, the high school replacement in and of itself is a gigantic undertaking. And you're, and frankly, you guys have tremendous facilities. I mean, you have multiple buildings, you have the bus depot, you've got a lot that is already probably pretty burdensome for your standing committee of facilities and finance. So that would probably be a good thing. And then when it's done, it gets dissolved and then that would roll into facilities.
I absolutely agree. And to your point, I do believe they are overburdened with the many things, even from the list that Mr. Julian had read. So your point is well taken to carve that portion out selectively just for the purpose of, of preparing for what ultimately would be an introduction of a new school in the district.
So if there's no other comments, then you have to...
Any other discussion?
You have, this has to be a roll call because this is, you're creating a, an ad hoc committee and it's pursuant to a bylaw. So it'd be a roll call.
So I have a question before we do a roll call. So I know it's come up a couple of times. And I know that in the past, when we talk about strategic facility discussions, that we've had full board discussions on it as opposed to a committee, so.
The, the committee will, if you, if the board votes for this ad hoc committee, as, as the policy said, I don't know how to use an apple, but I...
Eat it.
Yeah, exactly, apples are for eating. They can't do anything that's binding. And frankly, they can do stuff, you know, preliminary stuff and then report back to full board. And you can still have your strategic committee. Doesn't, it doesn't obviate the full board in having a strategic committee. It's really to kind of get things moving and done, you know, and report back on certain items. Yeah, so, because it says your committees are not authorized to take any action on behalf of the board. So they act in an advisory capacity. So if you guys are going to do a strategic committee of the full board, they could be advisory on whatever aspect the board charges them to do. And as this goes on, the board can charge them to do certain tasks to look into. Like, for example, you know, if, if the township committee has a land swap or they have the ability to finance it, because remember, you know, township committee, you've got AAA town, their bond rating is, is, you know, very, very, very favorable. So if there's things you can do with that, that's things that you guys could explore and then they could vote back for a strategic committee. Because to try to organize the whole board and the township becomes very impractical.
Mrs. Watts?
Was there already planning for a committee like this previously?
Yes, actually, the members of the committee have already noticed, so yes. So this is fine if you want to...
Yeah, that's what I was actually, my next question was going to be, because I understand that that's been in the works. So I'd like to hear...
It's been in the works, so this is fine. We want to, he wants to have a formal vote, have to do something we're already doing, absolutely fine.
Can you explain the committee that you're discussing now, the other committee?
The ad hoc, excuse me, the ad hoc.
Not Jeff's, the one that you...
Well, it's the ad hoc committee, what Jeff is talking about is the same thing that we...
Yeah, so what your bylaws say is that an ad hoc committee may be created and charged at any time by the president or a majority of the board members present in voting. So it could be created in one of two ways.
I understand that. So am I aware of that, other?
Is anybody aware of that?
Dr. Valeski and I have had conversations that once we got through graduation, this was a project for the summer, so.
Is there a committee in place at this point? You just said, I, I got confused. You just said there is one? Did I miss something?
No, we said, we've had the conversations, as I've told you before, when you've asked about it, that it was something that was projected to be talked about over the summer. I have reached out to board members about being, serving on the committee. So I have gotten confirmations from board members that were interested in being on the committee.
At this point, but at this point, is there a, a committee? And how were the individuals chosen, on what criteria, on what background, that they would be qualified to be a part of that? By, by what criteria?
By the criteria of board members that expressed an interest, board members that serve on the facilities committee, board members that I thought would be good for the committee.
Okay, so board members that expressed an interest? I have not heard from you, and I've expressed an interest for seven months or six months. So is it all the ones who expressed an interest but me? I mean, where, what are you doing?
Do you want to have this conversation as I explained to you in the last meeting? And I brought up the email in which you had taken yourself off of facilities. And I wrote the email to, to Mr. Juliana and to Mr. Jacoby, letting them know that you had asked to be not part of facilities. And I said, going forward, and I can show you the email, that I felt that therefore I didn't expect you to want to be part of something that dealt with facilities, being the rebuild. So that is why, Jeff.
No, and I appreciate that. I, I find it interesting. If I've asked about it for the seventh time, what would give you, excuse me, what would give you the indication I wasn't interested in that committee?
Because you've asked about it the last few meetings. But again, this was something that stems back from when you asked to be removed from the facilities.
I understand, that's not my question. You just said, for people who have expressed an interest in this committee, to which I've asked on seven occasions, what would give you the belief that I wasn't interested in something that I asked for seven times?
Because the committee is something that Dr. Valeski and I have been talking about before you started asking this. And as I've told you, timing is, is always something important. You have been asking the question, and I appreciate that you're asking the question. But I've told you that this was something that we felt with everything going on in the school year that we were going to be tackling over the summer. So I have reached out to board members, yes. We have talked about it, but I know that every time we've had this conversation, you ask the question again, and I've always told you this. If you feel that, that having this vote to do the committee, if this is what you want to do, that's absolutely fine, because as I said, the committee was already in the process. So if you would like a formal vote, I'm happy to have the formal vote.
I'd like a formal vote.
That's absolutely...
Well, you guys have a motion, a second, you do have to vote on it.
Yep.
I have a question, I'm not sure since I don't know all the bylaws. But does the president or anyone have the ability to form a committee without notifying other board members? Because I didn't...
The only person who's, who, under your bylaws, the only person, and this is very typical, who can form ad hoc committees is the president by him or herself, or...
So I don't have to know about that?
Well, eventually you'll know about it. But it's when the, when the committee is formally created and the board president has the right to appoint people to the committee, those members serve until the committee is discharged. So the one thing with ad hoc committees is, you know, they're usually done for like a limited purpose, things such as what you're talking about tonight. So there's a motion, a second, you do it. And then the board president ultimately makes the determination of who will serve on that committee, as the board president he or she does within every committee. Then it just becomes like a committee. But it's not a standing committee that won't live. It'll die after the...
I understand that, but I wanted to know...
He's asking if he was left out. You were not left out.
No, I'm not saying left out.
No, I know, but maybe you...
No, no, if the president forms an ad hoc committee and says, I'm going to form an ad hoc committee, so let's, I have that call. The president decides she wants to form an ad hoc committee on building two new elementary schools. She could just say, I'm forming a, we're not building two new elementary schools. And we're naming it the Daniels and Vicki. So that, she has the power to form that, and then she would just appoint members as you do with the other committees.
Well, I'm just worried about my transparency of hearing things, that's all.
Yeah, no, no, I mean...
Except for Jeff, but for me.
Right, yeah.
That would like to know stuff, I mean, not in a bad way.
There's nothing you're missing, I promise you.
I know, I'm just asking questions about my role.
This was something that we would be discussing.
So now, now that, now if you guys voted, it's created, then the president, under your bylaws, and again, this is very typical. It's, in fact, it's almost consistent across all boards. The board president then appoints members less than a quarter.
So if this, you know, we vote and it says yes, then she appoints anybody, you know, that...
Anyone she wants, yeah.
So it would be, in a sense, expedited what you were going to do anyway, maybe, I don't know.
Exactly. Yeah, it's, it's formalized.
You guys understand, like, follow what you're...
Yes, it's formalizing. It's, it's something that you, you would have heard this in, in a few weeks, but it's something that Mr. Winston would like formalize, so we're taking a formal vote, which is fine.
The chair, the chairperson of the committee is also appointed by the president. They, I'm just, they appoint the chairperson and then the other members.
Yep.
Thank you for...
This is true. I, I do expressly recall you, Ms. Lacks, talking about the formation of the committee and that it was in the works, so.
I remember the conversation, but...
It did come up in, in open sessions.
She said she was out to members and I...
Yeah, so I...
I don't want to be on it.
And I don't know anything more than anybody else here knows, so, you know. But I do recall you saying that. And I just want to say I'm confident in Dr. Valeski and Mr. Juliana to work with you to come up with the right time for forming this committee.
Just one question on that, and I appreciate that it was being formed. I, I think that's wonderful. Do you anticipate this committee having interaction with the township regarding some of the things that our mayor's brought up in, in recent meetings relative to township assistance, everything? Do you anticipate that communication to occur?
So, yes, so I don't think anyone actually was here for the rebuild at Memorial, except Vicki, who's not here tonight, and myself. So, so, yes, so in the past, when we've done this, you will have stakeholders will be there, members of the township, so, so, yes, we would be working together with the township.
All right, then I'm going to have to ask for the recusal of any committee involvement from Mr. Hong and Ms. Lacks as their involvement in the mayor's charity fund being appointed by the mayor, having the mayor's wife on that committee. I do think it's a compromised position. I don't think they're qualified nor to be part of any township discussions. Ms. Giacobi, I think you would have a difficult time ruling on this since you represent both parties, both the township and the, and the, and the district. But I do think a recusal is in order and hopefully integrity. You would both recuse yourselves from any involvement with the township while you serve on the mayor's appointed committee.
So for the record, the mayor's charity fund is named Mayor Cohen's charity fund. It has nothing to do with the mayor, it is not political. We are a 501(c)(3). We are independently, we are independently appointed trustees.
You are definitely appointed trustees by the mayor and his, his wife actually serving as a trustee. I, I would, I, I wouldn't then ask for independent counsel to review that. I do believe we have a compromised conflict.
We don't need to do independent counsel at all, frankly, just so the people know. I, I negotiated labor contracts. I haven't done any negotiations in quite some time for the town, but that's what I did. I was asked because Mayor Cohen saw how I negotiated here and asked me to come over and help negotiate there.
Fair enough, then your scope is narrow, okay.
But, so that was my involvement. I don't, I'm not the town attorney, they have separate township council. But the, the, the school ethics commission issues advisory opinions. So this is something that, you know, you could ask the school ethics commission if that's a conflict. Because that's what controls all of you, is the Ethics Act. Is, is serving on an advisory 501(c) board put you in a conflict in, in a situation like this.
I'll find out, I appreciate it, thank you.
No, but we, I mean, if you want a 401, we can, we can, you know, I can give Bernie the contact information and you can just drive, the board secretary could write a letter and say, we want a ruling. And you do that before you take action. The school ethics commission will issue advisory opinions. It takes about a month. And the advisory opinion comes back as long as you haven't taken action. So you can't, you can't get a, a go free from jail card. You can't vote on something and say, ooh, I might not, shouldn't have done that. Let me get an advisory opinion. It's, you do it beforehand, yes, yes.
Could you add to that then? Can the spouse of a town council member be on the advisory committee? So perhaps just add that to the school.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll work with Mr. Juliana, we'll just put, so this is not a conflict. We're just going to put down...
Options.
Options. And, and frankly, I mean, I think folks have to understand. This committee, if you, if you read the file, I just want to say what, the Board of Education authorizes the creation of committees of board members charged to conduct studies, make recommendations to the board, and act in an advisory capacity. Committees are authorized to take action on behalf of the board. So, you know, despite, I've disclosed to you, I don't think there's going to be a conflict for any of those things, to be quite honest with you. I don't think that the school ethics commission...
But if you're going to look, just like...
But you might, I mean, it was raised.
If you're going to look, yeah.
Yeah, I think you just...
Let me ask you a question then. So to Mr. Winston's point then, so if we were to, say, not include the township in this, if Mr. Winston feels uncomfortable, then maybe is that the suggestion that we don't include the township?
This is my suggestion to you guys. I think that the ad hoc committee of a board has no right to go meet with the township. The people that you hired to meet with the township are the two gentlemen sitting to my right. And they will make the determination of when we have to meet with the township. So frankly, what you're really talking about is, I mean, when you get down to it, it's going to be financing. You're talking about a multi, multi, multi-million dollar project. And if, if Mayor Cohen can do it with, it's not just Mayor Cohen, it's Mayor Cohen and the township committee coming up with something creative to do, that'd be something that I think first would probably be explored with your BA, etc.
I was going to say, that wasn't, yeah, that's not part of...
Yeah, so, so I think the ad hoc committee would not go, just go meet with the township and start exploring it. This would be something that, and I think that that issue, whether there could be conflicts, could be addressed, you know, if that does come up. I personally don't think that the school ethics commission will find that any of these things will be conflicts because it's an advisory body that's just coming back to the board.
For information.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you, 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 just because, you know, you guys are allowed to be members of your township and do things, you, you guys are allowed to have your spouses be members or elected officials. There's nothing illegal about that. You can have, I mean, I've, I had one board where I had husband and wife board members. And, you know, you guys don't have it here. This is, this is Middlesex County. There's other counties where like I have six of nine board members that have direct family members that work for the board. I mean, like to find a negotiations committee is kind of rough. So we could ultimately do the, the school ethics commission for advisory opinion. But I would say that right now, if you guys are going to form an ad hoc committee, really, you know, the people that interface with the town at the, at the first level clearly are your chief school administrator and your assistant superintendent for whatever, for everything else.
May I also add, also, all of us here serve on committees, advisory committees for the township. That's part of our requirement of being on the board. So let's say it's a senior center, sustainability, so then none of us would be allowed. You know what I'm saying? We all do something, that's the beauty of East Brunswick, because we work together with the township. Here, here we're doing a shared agreement for summer camp with the buses, right? So it, it actually is a plus that, that we work with the, I mean, all of us have assignments working with different committees of within, you know, the township, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you have, you have, you have a district employee who, you have, you have a district employee who's on the township committee. You know, so there's a lot of interaction. And actually, I think you actually have a district employee who's on the library board or... So there's a lot of, you know, synergies between the two.
Yeah, it's all very...
I personally, you know, I'm at the school ethics commission. I don't think anything that you guys have raised here would present a conflict because you're advising. That's what you're doing. And ultimately, if there's going to be a determination between the town and the board, then it would be some type of shared service agreement, etc. You know, and I, and I think frankly, those, that, that's going to be pretty far down the line. I mean, you, you guys have to first do the exploration of, I don't know what site you're looking at. I think it's in conjunction with the high school property.
Right on the high school property.
Yeah, high school property. You know, there's a lot of studying that has to go on with that. I mean, if you guys, you were, were here, a couple of years ago, maybe it was a longer couple of years ago, they found unaround vaults at the high school that PSCNG abandoned like 40 years ago and they were filled with oil and all kinds of stuff. Who knows what the heck's out there?
Okay, let's not raise the lawyers.
No, no, but yeah.
And I'll have to recuse myself because I, then I work for PSCNG, so we'll have no one left to do anything. So I just want to follow on and say what you're saying makes perfect sense. It's an advisory committee. And just for clarification, I only added on, if you were going to do a request, then you have to be comprehensive. I, I don't think it's necessary, but if you did one, it had to be comprehensive.
I, I don't, I personally don't think it's necessary. If the board ultimately wants to get one, you could just, any board member could call up and say, I'd like to get this. And we could write a letter. I did it, a number of years ago, I did it for a board member, I think I told you guys a story. She was a NJ SIA sporting official. And there was a possibility that she would be being a referee or a judge at county gymnastics meets where you might have an East Brunswick student. And the school ethics commission said, that's not a conflict. You know, you, you don't pick the kids who win the event. So I think the first thing you do is you form, you vote. Right now, we've had a discussion, you vote the committee. And then the president will make the determinations of who should be on the committee and who's the chair. And you go from there.